We're going to start with the work session. And Laura, do you want to call the role?
Certainly.
Thanks.
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marcus.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
Okay, so this is a special meeting, it's a work session, and we're talking about the strategic plan metrics that are the ones that resulted from the Accountability Work Committee with the University of Colorado and a couple of other districts, and that our own board member Kathy has been involved with. And with that, I'll ask Rob to take over.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, board members and public, for those that are tuned in to hear about the progress that we've made. As the board will recall, this conversation has been about a year. We've been working on this about a year, about a year ago at one of our summer meetings when we were over in the town of Superior in their boardroom. We began to start to talk about this conversation around metrics, setting metrics, what those might look like. And I would say over the course of the year, we've learned a lot, that we brought this back to the board in the fall, got some great feedback. We were given a great opportunity with a local school accountability grant. And then that has really shaped our work and our process from that time since January up until today. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our Director of Assessment and Accountability, Jonathan Dings, who will walk you through where we are in the process. Jonathan?
Thank you. President, Marcus, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. I'm pleased to be going along with you. The process that we've gone through to develop these metrics for our strategic plan work. What we'll do. The next slide here. In this presentation, we'll review the metric development timeline briefly that Rob gave you in large measure. Go over the long-term outcomes and the theory of action we have behind them. The work of our stakeholder group and present to you the recommended metrics for long-term outcomes and consider next steps. So that timeline, as was mentioned, we presented to you some proposed metrics last June, that those were in turn based on long-term outcomes that had been proposed as part of our plan work and vetted by our community. We revised metrics back to you in the fall, received feedback. We emphasized opportunity measures, presented an expanded list to DAC. And then we revised, some re-revised metrics for the board. We learned of the local accountability system grant funding opportunity in January. Sorry, and it was had recommendation for that in January, the grants and metrics update to the board, the process update you received in February. We received district accountability committee recommendations in March, right? And then in April, we convened with our group of stakeholders. And in May, we got feedback from the CU Center for Assessment, Design, Research, and Evaluation on some proposed metrics that we have. These are based on our ideas of how to measure long-term outcomes that are focused here around reducing disparities in achievement. In addition to making sure every student graduates empowered with the skills necessary for postgraduate success. And the fundamental idea here that all students benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities. Our theory of action underpinning this, right, is that if we increase meaningful opportunities and provide equitable access, then we will accelerate student growth, and that in turn will improve achievement and reduce disparities over time. You know, the kind of disparities we would talk about are not just in challenging and relevant educational opportunities that we'll go over momentarily in the postgraduate success metrics, but also in some achievement basis, right? Achievement and growth focused on closing our very substantial gaps. So the metrics that we have will ultimately include whatever's on the district performance framework, focusing on growth and achievement particularly, as well as some strategic plan metrics here, focusing in this case on ones around opportunities. And it's the combination of these, right, that gets us to what we'd like to be measuring over time in what we would see as the undergirding of an accountability system in which we state what we're accountable for and measure that over time. So these metrics will be designed to measure progress on closing the opportunity gap. And the idea here that we want to look at the success that students are seeing within these opportunities. They were developed with a stakeholder group of parents, of a school board member, high school student, two principals, district administrators, and representative of our teachers association, BVA. We intend for schools to use these in planning over time and reporting to stakeholders. And these will be reported in the grant, these were funded by, funded in part by, from CDE. And CD may report these with future district and school performance frameworks. Though we'll wait to see how the legislative funding of all this shakes out over time. A big thank you to our group of stakeholders, appreciate everybody's efforts. Kathy, appreciate you being with us for every meeting, as was Rob and her parents and our student, teacher on the group with our principals contributing too, and our district administrators as well. Really appreciate having feedback and coming to the right kind of metrics. As you might recall, the process worked from our draft metrics as well as the ACTS metrics feedback. This was synthesized into what the group of stakeholders would ultimately look at, pick from, identified two metrics to look at for CD to CU, pardon me, to look at and provide us with research on. And then ultimately, that came back to the stakeholder group, resulting in some recommended mutations. Well, we had initially planned for an extensive community feedback process in light of COVID-19 and closures, working from home, learning from home. This was information that was in turn gathered by stakeholders. The feedback was not as high of a basic scale. But this is being brought back to you for your feedback here at this June presentation. And will, in turn, based on what we see, turn into some metrics that we would use, sharing with schools as well as with the board. So the four areas of metrics really are around opportunity to learn in a climate where students relate to and feel supported by educators. Both of this and the second one, access to increased learning time outside of the regular school day or school year for students performing below grade level expectations. Both of these were the top recommendations of the committee and were what we had CU research. You may have had a chance to look at the presentation that's attached to this meeting agenda. That included the extensive research that was done by Dr. Elena Díaz-Bendol. And pointed out examples of how these metrics are used in other districts or a consortium of districts, or even a Canadian province. So we have some examples of how these work and how they fit into some bigger systems there, too. And the other metrics that we would add to this, to round out this set, this initial set of metrics, are the opportunity to take advanced math courses, as well as access to literacy intervention for students reading well below grade level. So this really is the outline of the recommendations that we would have. The next steps we see, well, depending on the feedback you would give us, we would develop displays of data and make those available for improvement planning with schools as early as the summer. We know we'll need to develop some data gathering capacity. In some cases, that's maybe improving, beefing up the kind of survey items we might use to examine something that is related to student perceptions. But in other cases, that might mean developing specific data gathering infrastructure and tabulating. We will, then, tabulating the percentage of students, student by student, who both need and receive a certain opportunity. We would expect to refine these measures as needed over time. And to know that this is not meant to be an absolutely complete set, it's not the case that we will never add any of these, and these are the only ones. This is where we would advise starting from. We would propose reconvening the group of stakeholders in fall to consider impact and additional metrics that we might begin thinking about. And would note that there's a grant reporting component to all this also. There's an annual reporting out of, not just the recommendations and the research documents, but things like meeting minutes to document the work that we've done and any feedback that's been gathered. So with that, I would invite Kathy, if you as a board member participant have anything to add to this, please by all means do, but otherwise, we'd turn it back to Rob and to you for your questions.
Kathy? Kathy, do you want to add anything?
Sorry, can you see me? I can't see anything, so I can't even tell if I'm on the screen.
We can hear you, and you're doing great.
All right. I just want to thank Jonathan for this, and I think this is a timely presentation because one of the big things in the opportunity measures is the climate in the school. And I think we're seeing that around the whole conversation we're probably going to have at our board meeting. So I think trying to look at how we measure school climate and so that students all feel supported so that they can actually learn to their fullest capacity is a really important thing for us to start looking at and trying to figure out how to measure. So that's really all I have to offer, but I just think I'm excited that we're adding some new measures. And I think, having listened in mostly to the teachers and the others as part of the accountability group, we got some really good feedback, I think. And so I just want to thank Jonathan and Rob for helping us stay on this track and for going forward. Again, like I said, I think the school climate information that we're going to start looking at and focusing on is going to be really helpful.
Tina, I'd also add, first of all, thank you to everybody who participated. You know, I also believe that the work that we're doing in our partner districts will lend itself to a bigger conversation around accountability at the state level. And I think that you will see board members over the course of the next weeks or months, that lots of superintendents, districts weighing in on what we should be doing about the district and school accountability frameworks, given COVID-19 and the impacts that we know that that's going to have on kids. And so I would add to that conversation that, as we continue to push on the state to improve those frameworks, that the work that we've done in our partner districts will do, be used as an exemplar to begin to push the thinking around. When you're talking about accountability, you do have accountability to your local stakeholders. And what more powerful way to set measures than to create a process that invites them in and allows them to tell you what's important? As this board knows, and maybe the public knows or doesn't know, that, you know, we always do really well on the district performance framework, certainly. Even with the disparities that we have that we know aren't okay, and our community isn't okay with. So, you know, it's hard to sort out when the state would say you're distinguished, yet you have some of the largest achievement gaps in the state. And I think that that really resonated with me as we started to think about this work, that there are different things that our state accountability frameworks could be thinking about. And we hope that the things that we've lifted up, and most importantly, the process can serve as a model for others. And so I also like to thank Jonathan, who's done lots and lots of work. And I'm proud of the way that this has evolved, right? Where we started in a place in June where we thought we had metrics. And we learned really quickly that there was more thinking and engagement that needed to happen. And while it did take a year, and that certainly is a long amount of time, I am really pleased with where we are today. So I'll open this to any other board member comments. I would think that what we're looking for from this presentation is a thumbs up to move forward with beginning the next steps, as Jonathan articulated, how do we begin to display this data? How are we going to collect this and share this? And how will it help us drive to improve in those areas which are aligned to our long-term outcomes?
Okay, Richard, do you mind if I start with you?
No, I don't mind. Thank you very much, Tina.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions, probably, more than comments. Well, first of all, I want to thank Jonathan and the team for doing this. The question that I have, two questions. One is, I saw the list of the members that were in the committee that looked at the metrics. And I recognize some names in it, but was it representative of elementary, middle school and high school?
So.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So we ended up having a high school teacher, a middle-level principal, and an elementary principal. So we had that. We had a high school student also, not from the same high school. And we had parents with students at the elementary level, certainly. And I think one high school, if I'm allowed to count the board member there also.
Me too.
Exactly. Sorry, Rob.
Because, you know, when we're looking at the achievement gap and we look at opportunities to close the achievement gap. And we all know that the achievement gap doesn't start at the middle school, it starts even before elementary. And I'm looking at the opportunity metrics that you all came up with. I mean, there's like about four of them, I think I saw. And that's the four that you landed at. So I'm curious to find out, what are the metrics were looked at? And how did you land at those four? Did you have other metrics that you were looking at in terms of opportunity metrics?
Yeah, I mean, what we had was the full range of metrics that we had talked about in, I guess, November. And the group basically prioritized us down to a limited number first, so that you could research these, right? While I would have loved to have, see research searching all, there was some limit to what we had contracted with in the grant. The other kind of metrics that we had talked about, right, and not landed on, but talked about as possibilities, were, there were metrics that involved, did the school have a functioning parent set of committees and a plan for parenting engagement that worked? We had a metric around, was there a community partner providing mental health services at that school? We had some metrics that were not as opportunity oriented, but were, you know, more oriented around outcomes, right? And then we had some metrics that were around more specific kinds of coursework, right? Broader statement about advanced coursework, some statement about engaging coursework that was meant to include things like internships, things like tech ed, not just an advanced course, just an IP course, just an AP course, but to be broader in that thinking. So there were other metrics that were on the list. These were the ones that made it to sort of first cut, we're thinking about opportunities and not and not as a group that exclude all other metrics or future work. Just ones that we wanted to believe were important to work on first, based on that range of opportunities.
Can you go back on the opportunity metrics?
I think I can. Let me try to reshare my screen.
And now only because I'm trying to see if other opportunities would fit into those opportunity metrics, or are they very specific to those opportunities?
So these metrics are specific. And at the same time, there's some breadth in them. This idea about access to increased learning time, that takes multiple forms. The general idea is that that's that same thing, right? But it does focus us in a certain way. In terms of school climate, that could be considered more broadly, right? If approved, where we would basically start from is the climate survey item or items that we have asked the past couple of years that are most directly asking about this construct, items like my teachers care about me.
The, because, you know, I can think of 100 opportunities that aren't included in here, but it seems to me like they're broad enough to maybe include some of those. The, this whole notion about the opportunity to take advanced math classes or courses, because we have a bunch of advanced courses, not just math. Why did you land on advanced math courses, I wonder?
So part of the thinking on mathematical courses is that because they are so absolutely sequential, that there are multiple points along a student's career in which you can check on whether a student is being put in position to take advanced, to take sufficiently advanced courses that they'll have advantages when applying to and entering college. Advanced math courses, there had an opportunity at the elementary level to look at acceleration by fifth grade into sixth grade in math or higher. At the middle level, to look at algebra or higher. And in high school, to look at taking pre-calculus by 11th grade or higher. I should probably add that part of the group's thinking on this also was to limit the number of metrics to basically start with. In that if we're going to give schools these in July as something we'd like them to focus on and be thinking about, that their ability to focus on this in even an ordinary year, having a more limited number of metrics enables focus in a way that having a broader number of metrics initially would change. Given the amount of focus this fall that will be put towards reopening, as you'll hear about in this evening's presentation, I would anticipate that we would prefer to go with a shorter list at this time with the opportunity to obviously add more metrics as we go.
Thank you, Jonathan. Just one quick, one more quick question, Tina, and I'll shut up. The access to literacy intervention for students reading well below grade level. I know that we have gotten rid of the, what is it, the reading recovery. Was that a result of this particular metric, or was it a result of something else? I mean, to me, that's part of literacy intervention, isn't it, reading recovery?
Well, I would say that it is. But the shift in what we have made is we've reallocated that resource to provide literacy interventions for more students. Reading recovery is very limited. And this was a result of our academic return on investment work, which is one of our strategic initiatives. The idea being that we should be trying to make sure that all kids who need literacy intervention get that. And within reading recovery, a teacher might be able to work with four kids a semester. And we felt like that based on the results that we're seeing and the investment we're making, that there were better ways that we could use that resource. So not a result of this, I think this actually came after that decision had been made. And, you know, just to reiterate what Jonathan had shared, I think that there was just a lot of energy within the group to limit what you're focusing on so you can actually focus on it. You know, one of these ideas, if you have too many priorities, you don't have any. And so that's really, Richard, how this whole entire list got whittled down. And that's kind of where we've landed.
Now, on the reading recovery, did we see any advancement of the kids that were taking the reading recovery interventions?
Happy to share again with you all kind of the results of that. I think that, you know, the analysis that we did was that within reading recovery, I mean, I think there's two things that when you have to think about resource, you have to think about how much growth kids who are involved in it are making, and then how many kids get to be involved in it. And we certainly know that reading recovery was very limiting in how many kids could respond to that. And as we looked at the results, again, that led us to make the change that we made. So the good news about this metric is that we will be accountable in regards to making sure that kids well below reading grade level have access to literacy intervention, and that will be very public. And it will help drive the changes that we hope to drive in regards to increasing not only our achievement, but reducing the disparities in achievement in reverse literacy.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I want to just ask, are we going to get the information on the kids that were in reading recovery, if they make any advancements or not?
Sure, absolutely. We're happy to provide all the information that we have, again.
Thank you very much. I'm done.
Kathy, did you have any questions or want to add anything?
I just wanted to add a couple of things to Richard. So I'm sympathetic completely, Richard, to the fact that the opportunity gap starts way before even middle school, which is why I like the way it's framed, opportunity to take advanced math courses. And one thing I think we all know is that those math courses at a certain level are also prerequisites to taking science in high school. So I think, to your point, I think it's really important that we have that in here. And the other thing we did, and Jonathan can help me remember which districts, but we looked at what other districts were doing. I think we looked at Chicago and two others that had way more complicated matrices and opportunity measures. And that's why I think looking at all that just made us realize that focusing on just a few like we are, we can add to them as we go forward. But these seemed like really foundational places to start. So that's all I wanted to add. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank DAC because they were very helpful from the very start, as Jonathan said, in getting these figured out, starting really broad and then working it down to this.
Donna, do you have any comments or questions?
No, well, just one. A thank you to Jonathan, DAC, Kathy, all your hard work. I do like the idea of, this is just a little picky point on me as I read through it. I like the idea of the opportunity to take advanced courses, but I think it goes beyond that. Opportunities often limited, as all my lifetime work in schools is seen by acquired skill sets. And so a focus on early intervention in many areas so that all of our students can achieve to their full potential is important. It's great to have the opportunity to take all of these classes, but what limits sometimes that opportunity, to reiterate what I was saying, what often limits that is the lack of the skills. And so that early intervention is so important. It's just, and I know that you've thought of all of that, and I just wanted to restate it. Thank you.
Hey, Kitty?
Tina, if I could just add one point. You know, both members, as we're tackling this difficult and complicated system work, I just want to be clear that this board and our public knows and understands that, as it stands today, you know, the prerequisites and the abilities to get into certain math courses is not set, there isn't a unified criteria, that that is really set by differing schools, right? So depending upon which school you are in, might depend on whether or not you can take some of those opportunities. And some schools don't even have those opportunities at all, right? So as we think about a systems approach to this work, you know, my hope is with this metric, we will be able to begin to revisit maybe some of those inconsistencies, ensure that we have the resources driven to support kids, to Donna's point. And that also that there's equity in regards to making sure who is able to advance and who isn't, right? As we think about the diversity in our advanced classes, I think that it's been well shared with this board that many of our advanced classes aren't very diverse and don't have students of color. And if you want to change that, you have to look at the system, certainly the resources and the preparation. But I'd also share that you have kids that are in our system today, that if they But, but I'd also share that you have kids that are in our system today, that if they were in other school systems, um, it wouldn't be a question whether or not they were in advanced classes. Right? So I just think that, that there's a lot of systems work to do with this. Um, and then by setting this metric, it provides the clarity for our schools and our district in, in, in the directions that we want to head as a system.
Okay, um, Kitty.
I don't have any questions or comments, except to say thank you for doing all the hard work it took to get us this far.
All right, Lisa.
Yeah, ditto. Just thank you to Jonathan and our stakeholder group. This is great.
And Stacy?
Same. Just thank you for the good work.
Okay, um, I had a couple of questions. The first on the school climate, we've been measuring school climate in a variety of ways since I've been involved in schools. Could you elaborate a little bit on how this is different? And also how this will work with the current school climate that we administer? Will it be a new school climate or will it be different or will it be amended?
Right. So, um, so the, the, this, 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 this is an area where we have some figuring to do. The, the, the survey that we have now and have had for a couple of years uh, in, in full does have an, an item or two um, that, that, that relate to this. We can add items to make it more robust and perhaps more uh, focused. So, and, and we might even potentially be looking at items that we would have used in a past survey. One of the districts that we, that we looked, looked, looked at, that is through, through the research that CU provided uh, was Chicago, right? Um, and uh, there, there is a focus there um, on a certain kind of way of looking at climate. So there are uh, so we would be adding to, I would anticipate we would be adding to the items that we have. Knowing that we need to see what kind of school climate uh, survey opportunity we'll, we'll have in the, in the fall. As, as we've typically asked, asked, asked this, uh, but we would we, we would, we anticipate having something to, to both start with and also beefing this, 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 this up over time.
And is this something that would be administered twice a year or just at the end of the year? And my question is about, you know, if we find in October that half of the students don't have a trusted adult whom they can seek advice from or feel that they can advocate, you know, can we act while the kids are in school or do we have to wait until the next school year to address a gap in that feeling of trust?
We've, uh, we've, we've opted, opted to test in late, late October and early November. For, for the exact reasons that you're talking about, that by getting information back uh, around Thanksgiving or so. We do give schools the opportunities to use this in, in the, the work that they'll do for the, the remainder of that year. We have so far shied away from doing the climate survey twice a year. Just on the um, amount of instructional time that takes and, and for the other reason you talked about. If we have school people taking this in April or, or, or May, then uh, it's really after the fact uh, that folks are looking, looking at the, at the data.
Okay, and then on the increased learning time outside of the regular school day. If I recall, we had a project called increased learning time, maybe six years ago? Or something, we got a grant and we added time after school to a couple of our Title I schools. And I'm wondering if we have any learnings from that, that, um, and, and we haven't really seen our gap decrease in the last 10 years that I've been involved. And we did, I, I, and, and again, it's how do we know that this implementation of increased learning time will translate into outcomes that change for our students?
Right. Um, so I'm, I'm not recalling all the, the particulars, but I, but I think I'm, but I believe the grant you're thinking of is one that was given in part to Angivine. Where, where there, there, there is a Saturday day school program still. That is one of the exact things that we'd be talking about uh, for, for this kind of uh, work. I hope I'm accurate in that recollection. And I, uh, but, but my recollection of the grant is it was a fairly limited duration used for specific purposes. Um, and that when the grant was over, uh, it, it didn't, um, you know, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not coming up with a specific thing that uh, would have changed based on the grant, other than, and I'll have to review with Angivine their history of if they had started Saturday school in advance of then. Or if that was a byproduct or a, a direct product of this grant kickstarting it.
I would, I would add to, to the conversation. I think that for um, increased learning time to be truly effective, you know, first and foremost, I think that you as a district and, and then as our strategic plan initiatives, one A and one B are leading us to. You have to have a prioritized set of standards that you are trying to, um, that, that all, all kids are expected to know. And that there isn't the variability that may once have happened within our district, in which we're trying to get more on the same page. Um, and then increased learning time, if they're not learning the things that, that you want them to learn, right? And so if it's not aligned to the standards that you've set, that you want all kids to learn. You can increase learning all kinds of things and then not show up um, in different measures, right? Depending upon what that time is being used for. So I think that they, that there does have to be some work. I don't think just the, you know, having more learning time, um, if you were to look at the research, it's more learning time engaged in what it is that you want kids to know. Tracking that, being mindful of that, um, and, um, and having teachers that have the resources uh, that are prepared to do that. So um, you know, in my experience, um, over, over my years in education, I've seen increased learning time work and not work. Um, I think it hasn't worked when you just say, hey, we want kids more and that time is really I'm not targeted to what it is that you're trying to, to get kids to learn. And very successful when um, it's well thought out, planned, um, and ties back into what they're trying to learn during the school day.
So Tina, it's Kathy. Um, I don't know if you can see me raising my hand, but I know a lot about that grant. It was, um, I think it came from Ford. It was a more and better learning time grant and, and Boulder got some and Denver got some. And what they found um, in connection with what Rob said was, first of all, you can't just add time to the end of the day. It has to be included. It's not just more time, but it's restructuring how you spend your time. So that they add more time and also what they found, because Colorado was one of their test states and Massachusetts, is that our funding levels were so low that they just quit the grant because they weren't able to find a way to systemically include all of the schools. So the schools in Denver that were getting the grant money were showing significant improvement, but Denver didn't have the resources to expand it, nor did Boulder. So they just pulled the grant back. So I think the results were good, but I think it was um, they couldn't, they couldn't implement it systemically in Colorado the way they were doing it in Massachusetts. Does that help?
It does, and I would give, say, given our funding situation, those conditions haven't changed.
Correct.
I hope that we're mindful that when we set out a metric like that, where we don't really have the funding to back it up in a systemic way. Unless we engage in an allocation discussion that is probably pretty broad, just to be careful about how we're measuring people. So that it's not punitive. Um, I, and I, I just have a similar, similar comment about advanced math class courses. You know, we tend to have more students in advanced courses in the secondary level because the expectation is the students in those courses need fewer supports than they do in a, a less rigorous course. And I think that when I was at Casby and I went to the presentation about how DPS was tackling the problem of engaging more students of color and more at-risk students into its AP classes, they dropped the class size to 16 because they felt that was a reasonable expectation for teachers to be able to give the support needed for those students. I'm fully in support of this metric, but I'm hoping that if we find that we can't really provide the supports and conditions to make this possible, that it's not punitive to the teachers in those classrooms. So that's my comment on that one.
I, I would, I would just make sure that everybody understands our intent is, is, is not to, to use this as, to be punitive against any, any people or teachers or administrators. I think that these um, help us uh, to, to kind of clarify our aspirations, right? And whether it's you reduce the, you reduce, you reduce the class size or you double the length of the, of the class or you add a support class. I, I've seen lots and lots of strategies. We're actually engaged with um, some potential partners as we speak to help us think about how we could begin to um, increase this. And so um, I appreciate your comments, Tina, but uh, and I, I think this is a lot, really in alignment with, with DAC was sharing, which is just don't set a measure and don't have a plan on how to improve it, right? Like that's why you really kind of need to narrow, to narrow what it is you're measuring. And so, so appreciate the feedback, but please know that those are the, we're thinking along those lines of how do we create situations that are good for kids, good for adults and, and help us move the needle.
Okay, well, that's all the questions I have. Um, board members, any other further questions about this presentation or next steps?
Yeah, I just have a comment on what you said, Tina, as it relates to punitive. I'm trying to figure out what that word, how it relates to the, the uh, opportunity to take advanced math courses. Would it, would it be punitive if we didn't provide teachers with all the resources they need? If we put kids that didn't have the skills necessary to do the advanced math courses? I'm not sure I understand what you meant by that.
I think it's more about our system saying that we failed. If we, if, you know, if we, if we set an expectation that we want more kids in advanced math courses, but we don't significantly change how we approach teaching our students math, then it's probably not a fair metric. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but I think that opportuners take advanced math courses, I think, start early. I mean, I know that a lot of students that would like to take advanced math courses, but they don't have the skills. And I think we need to start early enough to provide them with those particular skills so that when they do get to high school and they want to take AP classes in math or whatever, they want to take advanced math classes, they have the skills. And I think that's something that Donna was trying to.
Yeah, I agree. And, and I think for whatever reason, it's not happening now, but I don't think it's from a bad intention. I just think we need to work on how do we enable more kids to acquire those skills so that they're ready to go.
And, and I might add, we have to be careful too, uh, just like with adequate yearly progress when some districts realize that they're they're not um, meeting it and they, they want to move up in their adequate yearly progress. So they increase the uh, rate of graduation by and, and, and people and principals have done it by kind of handing out diplomas without really having the skill set. And sometimes students complain that even after they graduate, they can't even get into a, a, a class at the community college. They have to first take the uh, the uh, classes that are going to put them in an accredited course.
And, and I will share with the board that, that our intention is obviously to work directly with our schools as we think about this. That, that this is not going to be, you know, and, and working through what those look like. But, but again, I'll reiterate, you know, the math skills you need to take to, to take an advanced math course varies from school to school, right? Like we, we're not even on the same page yet and we, we'll get there. So this will be a collaborative conversation. I appreciate the conversation here at the board level. Um, and, and we're really excited to, to begin to take on this work.
Awesome. Um, it is exciting. And um, board members, if we adjourn now, we can have a 10-minute break before our next meeting. Is everyone okay with that? I can't see all of you to say no if you're not.
Yes.
All right. So we have a different link for the next meeting and we'll see each other in 10 minutes.